He's got to be quick. Like to call the February twentieth, Wall City Council meeting to order. Carolyn, please read the roll call.
Zach?
Here.
Marvin?
Here.
Stan Anderson? Stan Anderson?
He's up.
Can you hear me, Stan? Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Pop?
Here.
Mike Anderson? And can you hear us again?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Garrett, would you read the pledges, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Carolyn, do we have any order of business for emergencies?
No.
And do we have attendance on Zoom?
Councilman Stan Anderson is on Zoom.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So.
Mike Lou, Jerry seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have any conflict of interest that needs to be declared or recused? Okay, seeing none. Your minutes were in your packet from the February tenth meeting. Would I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February tenth meeting?
Moved.
Dan moved?
Seconded.
Rick seconded? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I understand, okay. Get these over there. Okay, also, in your packet was this claims. The city of Wall, the total amount tonight is thirty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars fifty-five cents. And the other claims that we have tonight is for the fire department, two thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars ninety-five cents. Did anyone have any questions about any of those claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve city of Wall and fire department claims. Zach moved.
Seconded.
And Dan seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. For your review, Carolyn included the expense budget. Are there any questions? This time? On the budget to date? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We're at public comment. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns on any issue, not on the agenda. And each person would be given three minutes. And I'm not seeing anyone in the audience that might like to do that, so we'll move right into the chamber director report. Ms. Katie, please.
Thirty-sixth is the new record?
Yeah.
You should have the community center report in your packet, I think it's for February, January, November, December, March, okay? And does anybody have any questions? We've mostly just been busy with wrestling and with the NRCS meeting in there today, and yeah, there's just lots of wrestling.
And how many people were involved with that NRCS?
You know, I don't know, but they had kind of a full
Full room.
Yeah, they had a full room in there, so they must have been, I don't know that it was statewide, but it was a bigger one, so they had a bunch of people in there today.
And they all went for lunch, where that was even better.
They did, yeah. Is there any questions or anything? Okay. And then for, just for chamber, there's a celebration meeting is Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, at four-thirty PM here. If anybody's interested in joining us, we would sure take anybody else that wants to jump on. And then my next board meeting will be Friday, the seventh, at seven AM here. Next chamber luncheon would be the eleventh, Tuesday, the eleventh, at noon here. And then we're just mostly right now, just getting ready for our annual meeting planning. It's gonna be Wednesday, April sixteenth, and I believe the social hour starts at five-thirty, and meeting will start at six. You guys are all invited to the, I'll get invitations here, but if I'm gotten it out yet. That's all I know. All right, thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the resolution that Carolyn proposed last month. Resolution number twenty-five oh three, authorizing the issuance of an on-sale alcoholic beverage license for use at a city-owned facility. So, do we have any other comments or questions about this, or thoughts?
This is strictly for celebration, isn't it? So I feel I shouldn't because I'm on the board.
On the celebration committee? Okay.
At this time, I guess I just, since it's a new thing, I guess I it's a celebration, maybe as time goes on, there'd be others, but for this resolution, we'd have to amend the resolution for that, but for this time, it's just the celebration.
I think it's a great resolution to do for the celebration.
And we're, list the Sakura certified law, it goes on to explain some of the other things, but at this point in time, we're actually thinking about it specifically for celebration. Okay. Okay, Jerry moved. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, that brings us right along to the solid waste contract. On February twelfth, the street committee, Carolyn and Garrett and waste management officials, Donald and John were here in person. And we had a conversation about our contract that we'd had with Sanders and moving forward. So and, oh yes, and Nathan, the attorney was the third, okay, thank you.
I'm content to just hang out in the shadows here.
Do you happen to have your consent in front of you that you wrote?
Yes.
Okay, and so tell us how you feel. Does this adequately move the contract that we had with Sanders to the waste management? Give us your opinion here.
Well, I think we, I asked Donald, I think it was, at that meeting, if they had some writing, a written agreement that would show that Kiefer bought all of Sanders' assets, including those contracts. Ideally, I think we would see something like that. But absent that, I mean, I think the keepers should be required to fulfill the other terms of Sanders' contract. So this consent form is really just saying we acknowledge that the contract was transferred or assigned from Sanders to Kiefer, but we still are gonna hold Kiefer to do the things that Sanders was going to do, like provide insurance and maintain the surety bond and that sort of thing. So this consent is really just saying, you know, it's okay that that was transferred as long as Kiefer's is gonna continue to do what Sanders promised to do.
One of the things that Sanders said was that they donated, I'm sure Kiefer probably does too, I'm sure everybody, and people, we certainly love them, do they, were they when they were here?
Yeah, they donated all the poor bodies and what else, maybe, they did quite a bit, it's not a free dump on the United Day, and they usually, they always, you know, when I was there, if I called them, they would always bring a truck out to the school after homecoming, so they could throw all their stuff in at night.
So they were always good to us, it's just they had put in a bit when talking here.
I have a feeling we might have had some things going on, and it just kind of got overlooked, possibly, because I feel like there might be new administrative, new some management or something in there, so I can't say that for sure, I just have that feeling.
So along with the consent then, and Nathan, you would have seen the addendum
Yes.
to solid waste contract, and that's Carolyn put that together?
And I did send that out to Nathan and to Donald, knowing that I would, you know, share it with you guys then too, but I just got a response today from Donald that they would look it over, so I guess.
Like, an hour ago.
Right. So I don't know if, I mean, I'm not saying, guys, I can approve that addendum until they have a chance and they want to approve it as well, I can bring it back, but at least you guys know what it says, I guess, and what I'm asking them to. Did you think it was appropriate?
Yeah, my only, my comment is, just so you all are aware, council, that there's really nothing that changes with the contract, it's an addendum, but it's not really modifying anything other than there's print in red, which just clarifies that Kiefer cannot go and sign or transfer that contract without letting this council know and get their written consent. Which in my view, I think that's probably implied by South Dakota public contract law in dealing with municipalities and bidding these sorts of contracts, but I don't think, my, I requested that at the last meeting, or maybe at the, the meeting with Donald and because I don't think this council should want to see that slip through the cracks again and get transferred to somebody who's not going to be reliable.
Exactly.
So that's the only thing that this addendum really looks to do, is kind of just state explicitly what I think is already implied by law. The other term of the contract provision, I think, is verbatim the same as the original bid contract, so in my opinion, that is all fine and dandy.
So actually, since we're originating this addendum, would it be correct that we need to approve it first, and then they come back? If they choose not to sign it, or they, or do you suggest we wait until they have an opportunity to look it over? What's, what is the appropriate procedure?
I don't know that there is an appropriate or protocol. It's just who wants to make the first move and ask the other party to dance, so I don't see why the council can't agree and present it to them to make the next move, just to keep it going. But yeah, we don't have to just take whatever they might propose. If this addendum and the consent to the transfer are agreeable to the council, then I think we can move forward with it.
Because I guess I was thinking, this is what we wanted, and we're offering this to you.
Right.
There's something there you don't like about that. You're gonna have to come back and argue with us about it, but this is our invitation. How do you, is anyone feeling differently about that on the council? Okay, so with that, I would think that we would need two motions. One, to approve the consent to assignment, and then follow that with the addendum to solid waste contract. Does someone want to make that, make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent to assignment of the solid waste collection contract.
Seconded.
Okay, so Rick has moved, and Mike has seconded to approve the consent to assignment of solid waste collection and/or collection contract. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now in front of us is the addendum to solid waste contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the addendum.
Dan has moved, and Jerry has seconded to approve the addendum to solid waste contract. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Nathan, are they gonna have any issue with the fifty thousand dollar performance bond, or whatever it is? That just kind of standard?
That was in the Sanders contract, and I don't know if Sanders posted a bond, or how that was going into effect, but they shouldn't have a problem with it if they purchased all of Sanders' assets. I think that liability would go with it too.
Thank you.
Do we need to make note of that, that ask about, about?
I will, when he
Okay.
responds to the addendum.
Okay.
Say that we also need the proof of insurance.
Okay, proof of insurance and bond. All right. Moving along then, we have a guest speaker this evening. Like to introduce to our community, our city engineer, Ted Schultz, from Bath. And he's, we've had some conversation, and he, we indicated we had some water issues that are happening as we speak. And he is here to talk to us about some things that he's looked over, and how he's gonna suggest we proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate being here, council. I do have a document on the front of you, in the handouts. If you have it on the screen, I don't know if it shows up for the remote viewers, but Pam put it on.
Because it might just be sleeping.
Thank you for noticing, I didn't see that, so so thank you.
On your screen, you've got an image of Second Avenue, Third Avenue area, and Creighton Road up to Golden Norris. And so what we've done is we've investigated the water mains in those areas. Right now, you have orange and cement, asbestos cement water mains on Second Avenue. And in 2014, there was some work done that I was involved with, bringing trunks to review the intersection with Glenn and Second. And so with that, we ended up replacing some of that water main just in the intersection, so that we could get through there properly. We set it up for future extension, which now with this project, we can extend it properly. And so we do have some active issues on that east end near Creighton. The last home there has basically no water service right now, it's shut off. There's been two and three leaks there over time, and right now, the home is unoccupied, but it's planned to have occupation here at about the first week of March, in that timeframe. So what I've done is broken out some costs based on those boxes you see. So the red meaning the higher priority area, the one block from Glenn to Creighton Road. And that's about two hundred and eighty feet of eight-inch water main. And with that, we would propose to replace the three water services in that area. There's actually four on that street, so we'd replace the water services along with the water main. And then we would replace the pavement that's also very poor condition, right in that water main area. So about half of that street has newer pavement from the sewer project, and so we'd end up replacing the bad quality asphalt with this water project. And so there is a little bit more asphalt than maybe we would have normally encountered just for water main, but I think it's the right thing to do, to make that street whole, basically. So that is one of the areas we looked at. The cost on that is about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars is my estimate. So we're using Black Hills local, you know, estimating information and recent bids and contractor information, so that includes engineering and construction, so that's the budget on that one. The next block from Glenn to Norris is a little bit longer, about three hundred and fifty feet of eight-inch water main is what we proposed there. There's more services also on that street, and so we proposed that that section also be put into your capital improvement plan. Doesn't have to happen this year, but it is a higher priority based on what we've seen in that area with the asbestos cement pipe and the cracking that that is, has happened, right? So it's a very fragile pipe, put in in the seventies, you see seventies, eighties, and it's very fragile in nature. And any movement, any crossings will often come back with a crack and a leak. And I know Garrett's crew has dealt with it a number of times, and it kind of fixed one spot, and it pops up a few feet down, right? And so it just kind of keeps moving, and if we don't take care of that higher section, you'll probably continue to encounter this problem. It's something we've done over the years, you know, a number of areas, Northeast Street, I know is one of them. It had a lot of asbestos cement water main, so something we've done in the past. So that project's about two hundred and fifty-five thousand, and again, you know, I think that's something that you could put in your capital improvement plan, and have a budget for that. We also looked at North Creighton Road, basically from First Avenue north. And you can see the area there in yellow, that is what we are considering to be the city city-owned street, city-owned roadway there for North Creighton Road. The rest of Creighton Road is county, Creighton County, and so that road itself is in pretty poor condition. If you've been out there, there's been a lot of materials hauled in and out of that area towards that county shop. And it's alligatored and rutted, and it's probably gonna be coming apart for not too awful long. The water main also out there is also asbestos cement and older. And you can see the blue line there is what we recommend for replacement of that water main from first all the way to the north end of the main plant, about a thousand and fifty feet of water main. So that would include two new hydrants, new water services that are currently out there, reconnected, and those two projects could go together, or they could go, probably not. You'd probably end up with a water main first and the road second, if you're gonna do it that way, or you could do them both together. So that's kind of a choice you could make. We're gonna be ending, putting the water main in the ditch, wouldn't need repairs and drainage work in the ditch if we go that direction, with that on the east side of North Creighton Road. So that's about two hundred and sixty-five thousand for water main and three hundred and thirty thousand for roadway and drainage. And that, those are the projects we looked at, we kind of scoped them, where did we hear it, and the information that he had and hid in files, and kind of came up with this. We also have your GIS map from South Dakota Real Water, came out, mapped your water curb stops, your sewer lines, manholes, all of that, fire hydrants. And we have that in a file now, into a map, and so we're updating that. Probably the most current map you've ever had? Yeah, yeah, so we always like to look at the wall maps in the shop, right? You come in there, nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties maps, all pretty interesting hand sketch stuff on there, but this, this is coordinately accurate, you know, with dimensions, so we're getting some pretty high-quality map, and I guess I'll say also with what we're doing right now.
So when was that done, that he's talking about, or?
The map?
When you did Real Water come?
The real one?
Three?
Two, three years ago?
Oh, no, I bet it's, I'm sure Jim was still here, so.
There could be some updates we need to do also on it, but it's the most current map that you're gonna have. It's one of those things that we, as we do projects, we'll continue to update it. So with that, that's kind of the summary of where we're at. You have the choice if you want to proceed with any of these projects, or you want to table them, you want to wait, but I do think that the one block on Second from Glenn to Creighton is critical. City could declare that an emergency, we could go and get quotes from contractors, and try to push that forward as fast as we can. I think we could get
I actually reached out to the legislative body, Rod Horton, and he said, you know, it just needs to be declared at a meeting that it's an emergency repair needed. And you can just, you don't have to get quotes, you just get somebody to go in and take care of it, so.
Yeah, we kind of have a phased approach, we talked about to get that service line active first, and then we would need to get materials, you know, more materials onsite to build the rest of that water, the rest of the way, so. There's also some curb and gutter there that holds water, and we would try to get that resolved. And try to get that street and the water line in good condition, and sewers have already been upgraded there, so we'd be in, have all the, all those things upgraded.
Would you have to, would all the work be in the street, or would like some of it be on the sidewalk right away?
We're gonna be into the, right away, over to the property line, so we want to put those curb stops in, near the property line, either on or near the property line. So that's, that's the work that we would do, basically on, in the right way, but near, you know, in the long.
With like this type of project, who we looked at doing sidewalks, where it's getting torn up at, so then their sidewalks start to form over that side?
Yeah, there won't be, it will be just in the street.
It's gonna be pretty minimal behind the curb, just where we're doing the service line, so I don't know that there's enough there to, I like the idea of trying to make it all happen together, but I don't know if there's enough. Maybe you could get a project where you did all second or something at one time, when the water main jobs are done there.
Oh, so I, okay, so you've got a hundred and sixty to one seventy?
That's, that's my range, you know, until we get contractor quotes, we're not gonna know exactly, and we're trying to give you the best, my best estimate.
So, but if the city provided truck loader and staffing?
Yes.
Like what is the Like what is the value of that?
That's a tough one to put a, you know, pencil to. Um, you know, it's probably less than ten thousand dollars. You know, come on, Garrett, play your smart. Probably at about ten dollars an hour per month. But uh, you know, that's something we talked about is, yeah, it would help if the city provided a loader and truck. Um, you know, it would help the contractor get things done faster. And uh. I know some of the contractors we we've talked to, they they don't have as many people to operate pieces of equipment. So I think it would help speed up the process and save the city money.
Yeah, I would just think that maybe we could, what the guy do, like maybe come up with an hourly rate and keep track of that or?
I I think that we basically tell them upfront that you're going to do this. It's how we do it. And then they bid that in, they don't include a truck or a loader in their price.
Absolutely.
That's how I would recommend it.
Okay.
But it's gonna be hard to quantify the exact value of that. You know, is it five thousand dollars, eight thousand dollars, ten, you know, something on that order?
So I guess the question uh, before I set the moment then is that. We need to recognize or decide if you feel like this is an emergency and. Garrett, is this an emergency?
Yes.
Okay, this is an emergency. Got that figured out?
To service, to the installing block is also.
The installing block is also, yes.
Yep.
Okay, so if it, in since it, since it's his opinion and emergency, then our process is that. We can say it again, Carolyn, just choose, go to a.
Declare and then show up in a minute. So the council declared this an emergency repair. And you can just go to someone and negotiate with them. Or, you know, take their quote.
And Ted would do that negotiating?
I would help to negotiate that. And if you want to have someone to table with me, that's great. But yes, I've done this before for the city.
So like you and Garrett could sit down with this contractor and have a conversation, Zach?
Yep.
Kind of the, the game plan you're thinking? Okay.
So is this for the red section or the red end?
Just for the red section, yes. Over a million dollars worth of water main, but we're looking at for the whole project.
That's right. So that's why we're trying to do what we can do right now. And and that's why you referred to putting some of these other uh, parts into a capital outlet?
Yes.
Which would put it in the next year?
Yes, yes. You could put it in in schedule. Oftentimes what we'll do is recommend. You know, it's two years out, three years out, five years out, and the city council can weigh in on on those things. Uh. We looked somewhat at funding. I sent you some information on DOT funding. For instance, for the roadway section on North Creighton. Um, I ran through an analysis on that. It actually scores fairly low on the rating scale, I'm sorry to say.
We'll explain that though.
Yeah, I can explain that a little bit. It's pretty likely there's, there's a possibility of four hundred points. And about thirty or forty questions to answer. So how many businesses are impacting? Uh, what's the condition of the road? Uh, how many employees are in that area? Um. Is there water and sewer utilities, you know, going in with that project? That's a, adds add some points to it. Some things like that. The other one is if you've had a community access grant the last five years. Uh, you either get zero points or fifty points depending whether you have or haven't and and the city has with Fourth Avenue. So you lose fifty points right off the bat because you've gotten a community access grant the last five years. So you scored about a hundred and forty out of those four hundred points. And I talked to the DOT manager, Paula Heisinga, and her, you know, brief opinion was. Go ahead and submit it if you like. Uh, it's, it appears like you're gonna score low. Um. She said basically unlikely to get funds or a lot of funds, right? So um. And we, we did this years ago on Glen Street. We got some funding. So you've done that on Fourth Avenue. We got some funding. So it it does work. It's a great program. This one just doesn't hit all the marks that it that it takes in that application. So that's it. We can still submit it. Um, you can wait until that five years is up and then submit it and maybe that helps you.
Exactly. Okay, so I just wanted the council to hear why that wasn't enough. Okay, so.
Do we need to make a motion to the, I make the motion to declare emergency repair on Second Avenue Water Main from Glen to Creighton?
Okay, Zach has moved.
Second.
And Dan has seconded to declare an emergency for uh, Second Avenue Glen Street to Creighton. Any other comments or questions or concerns?
Somebody's gonna move into that house in the corner? Yeah, we've got some information that it's gonna be.
She's coming back.
Yeah.
She goes to Arizona in the meantime. She'll be back March. Her California, yes.
It's only a week or two away. But we thought we should be doing for water.
We're gonna.
We'll have it.
We'll figure it out.
We've got to step one in this program to get here water. Masonic temple, probably not.
They're not too big. Well, it's also, that line also is pretty much in the same area, so.
You could, you could hook that up as well.
I think it's, I don't know if it's turned on. It's turned on.
But. Sorry, I just, you said.
So like the first of March and.
Yeah, it's, it's not too long here and it's gonna be occupied and uh, something we should definitely get. Get a hold of here. And I said, we have a temporary, I'm gonna call it a temporary fix to get that going right away and then we'll make a permanent fix. It is in a garden hose from the neighbors. A little better than that, a little duct duct tape and family wire.
Duct in the fire, right?
Something to take her over there.
And so then when would the real construction?
So, yeah, depending when we get a contractor there, I would like to get them there. Um, during the month of March, you know, and sometime mid to later March, I'd like to get there and start doing some work. Um, if we can get materials there. And there is, you know, the asphalt pavement, um, asphalt plants don't open until mid-May usually. Sometimes they're really, but I'm kind of putting a June fifteenth schedule on it that we would shoot to be completed by.
Completed.
Completed sometime in June, if we can get a contractor lined up to do that. So I think it's a, a two to three month process, you know, hopefully our cold weather is behind us, right?
And so how uh, how many people are we going to be uh? Not accommodating, like who all needs to know about this? Is there any thing like, well, in Fourth Avenue, we did a good job of getting people total. This is what we're doing. Your water's off, your water's off.
Just be two residents, northeast.
Okay, so minimum uh, hassle for people?
Miss Hayes, is that on that? She, is she on the other water going down?
Yep.
Okay.
And and we would, I'll tell you a little bit about the T-prints. We would look to close those, that one block essentially while we're doing this. We're allowing, you know, residents to get to their home, obviously. But through traffic, we would not allow the through traffic there till we're done with it. I don't think there's any reason we'd have to have through traffic there. Um, so the one thing we do have to do is cross Creighton Road, which is Pennsyl County jurisdiction. So we need a permit there and we need, you know. Permission and approval there for that to get that done. So we have done, applied for that. I wanted to hear this tonight. And so we'll start getting into that process here shortly. And uh, we really can't uh, we can't bore the road there. The uh, water main in Creighton is right on the edge of the pavement. So. We're gonna have to tie into that water main and we really, we will have to get into the Creighton Road asphalt and that. So there will be some impact on Creighton. And with that, we're talking, uh, you and I have talked about a plan where. Uh, travelers from the north in Creighton will turn and and go down Second while we have Creighton closed. And travelers going uh, north from the south will uh, possibly go around it, um, either. West or east, and we have some negotiations to do there to try to get some additional area there. We'd get a little gravel path around it. So that Creighton Road is probably the hardest part about the project is crossing, crossing that road.
So any fertilizer trucks are gonna use? What street to get?
They'll, they'll use second, they'll use Second Avenue to get over towards, yeah, North Main. They'll, they'll be able to go down Second Avenue while we cross Creighton, Creighton Road.
Okay, well, when you're working on second?
We're gonna, we're gonna restrict the work in Second without closing Creighton Road, right?
Right.
Until we absolutely have to.
Correct.
Yeah.
But also I'm wondering about the trucks on, that they'll just not be to go by it? They're just gonna have to go down the forty.
And we can put out, um, if you do that on Facebook or anything, public service announcements, announcements on your, your traffic control that we put up.
Yeah, okay. Just something to be aware of.
Yeah.
Truckers are gonna need to know that. Okay. All right, so we do have a motion and a second to. Declare emergency. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Right, motion carries.
Uh, question for the um. For the road, the North Creighton Road, that's city owned. Like, if we tear that up and get it all good again, would there be any interest in talking with the county to have them take that over? Because it's a lot of their trucks, you know, that are beating that road. Or contractors are coming in because I know that one back row on was when they had all those contractors coming through. Would there be any interest in trying to see if the county would take over that road?
Well, that's an idea because we were gonna talk to him about helping us pay for it to get this repaired.
Or say, like, if we repair it, like, would you guys take it over then, you know?
They're talking the other part?
Yeah, they have a part.
They already do. Snow removal and stuff, everything, you know.
But then this way, they're just, we won't have to repair that road again with, it's not, I don't like a lot of trucks. And blades and snow piles aren't easy on them.
I think that's a good approach. Uh, we had talked briefly about, you know, even approaching a lot of cost here if that is an option. So. Yeah, there's some other discussions there too.
So we'll put that on our list of things to talk about or choices. And uh, Carolyn, I forgot to allow you to provide input about how this affects the budget. There's. If we're talking about this amount, there's money enough?
Um, I, you know, I'm okay with this being an emergency type thing, but the others are gonna have to be put into a. Capital plan, you know, and stuff, but yeah, I, I think we'll be okay with this. We don't have any projects on the budget, but I just try to put some cushion in there for this type of thing.
Would we be able to, if we get the budget, can we be able to start in on some of these projects? Yeah, this is.
Oh, the other ones?
The other ones, yeah.
No.
Those will have to be planned for when we start.
Yeah, we're gonna squeeze this one in because we have to, but those others are down the road.
Could you wait on the North Creighton five years to get that? The road might, might be in tougher shape by then. Might take some patching in the meantime or some.
Is there a five year reason or?
Get more funds back.
Okay, trying to, okay.
You have, yeah, might, you might have a couple of years expired already, so we can look at that.
Yeah, I don't know what they consider, like when we first applied for the grant or when we actually received.
Right, yeah.
Like they go.
Wait five years, there might not be much road to tear off?
So, okay.
The only other thing I have, Mary, is if you're interested in proceeding here, we, I've got a budget of our engineering services. Um, thirty-six thousand and fifty dollars for devised, instructional demonstration, observation, and testing. Is what I've got for you for yourself. You don't have to act on that right now to recall, but I, I wanted you to have that. And that's included in my estimate of of the project.
Of the one sixty?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, because I was just about.
Yes.
To be nervous.
I like to give you the, the project costs of what it's gonna take to do that project. That's what I've always done here. And it seems to work well that we try to stick with, here's our budget.
Thank you, because I thought I understood you to say that the other day.
Yeah.
And I, I'm proud of you sticking with your work. Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
So that thirty-six is part of the hundred and seventy-eight?
Yeah, I saw your sand ass there.
And therefore, so would it be appropriate then to go ahead and approve that work order? If it, if we know that it's a part of this, a hundred and sixty to one seventy-eight? Which still could be even lower if we get a contractor on board that will help. Or no, that's where we're at, with them. Okay, don't worry about that. Okay, Mike.
We need a motion number.
Would you please?
Yep, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mike has moved to approve work order number two. And Jerry has seconded uh, for the water main project Glen to Creighton Road. Any other questions or thoughts, concerns?
Does that thirty-six thousand cover the other two projects? I like it too, right? There's your answer. Just a laugh.
I love it, Jerry.
Thank you for starting, Jerry. Okay, all those are, here, no other comments then? All those are favorite say aye?
Aye.
Although opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right.
Right. Two more kind of things.
Um, I'm sorry, have Mary sign these and then I scan for you or do you want her to give you a copy now or all signed?
Either way, either way, just give you two copies so we can each have them. The only other two things I have is, we're gonna focus on the water main project, get that moving for you. And we are uh, moving ahead on that already. But we'll, when that's, simmers down, we're gonna go to Kelly Live Station and look at the capacity out there. We talked about. Just visiting about the capacity and what's left in that station, putting up those additional services coming into that station. So that's one thing we're gonna do here later this spring. And then when the snow melts and the frosts on the ground, frost heats are done, Garrett and I are gonna. Drive the, drive the town and look at all the streets, see what kind of condition they're in. And start looking at a list of priorities for future street projects. So we'll come back to the council with a list of these streets that we feel are highest priority and. Try to give you the best realistic approach of, here are the, here are the ones we feel like we should really spend money on sooner than later. Versus ones that can wait. And so that's what we've done over the past and and will continue to do that. You guys can make a choice. Okay? That's all I got.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Jerry.
Uh, also your package is a twenty twenty-four final budget overview. Carolyn, could you help us understand what?
So I was finally able to get the December bank records. Um, so that I could put this together because you guys had not been receiving financials while I was working. Put this together because you guys had not been receiving financials while I was working through. Switch over part of the software, so I put this together, um. The left-hand column shows you what the proposed budget was for all of those funds and then spent, like in that. Uh, expense column tells you what was spent in that fund. Um, I highlighted the areas that we did have to supplement, um, because we overspent the budget. And so those colors coordinate with that to know where that came in at. And then, um, same way as down below, those are, the top part is the general fund. Um, so that's a separate from the enterprise funds. And so then down below is the BBB funds, Fire Department, Library, Cemetery. Water, wastewater, and solid waste, and same thing. I color-coded the ones that had to be supplemented. And then at the very bottom, I gave you the current account balances. Um, of where we are with the checking and the money market and how that splits out. Among the water, wastewater, and solid waste, uh, what portion of that money is tied to that account. Don't know if you had a chance to look at it much, but if you see it and you have questions, but. You know, basically, I feel like we did pretty good, really, because our, um. Expenses with the supplements included was, uh, six million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-two. And our revenue that we ended up with was seven million, two hundred and fifty-two, so. We did come out pretty good there. So you can see on the revenue side that, that we were ahead of the property tax than what we had thought. The sales tax was a little ahead, even though we were down from the previous year. I always figure low and I plan revenues for the budget just for that reason, but. Everything either came in at what we thought or a little above, so we did pretty good there. And so if you have any questions for me, I can try and answer or. Kind of stuff, this might kind of give you a final picture of how we did for the.
So your color code, uh, pinkish means under.
Well, no, the pinkish coordinates with the pink in the bottom, like, for, okay, at the top. Well, the pink one you're talking about is the library. So, the expense was forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-one. We budgeted the thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and twelve, so we supplemented that ten thousand five hundred. That coordinates what we supplemented to what fund. Makes sense?
Is that, again, when a ten thousand was at that CD then?
That was, so they had moved some money from. They had some CDs that came due and they were really low interest, so they. And they had a savings account, so they moved the savings account and the CD that came due, and then they took some from their checking account to. Do a rounded number of forty thousand that they put into a CD. And so, of course, when the money came from the checking account. It had to be expensed out, um, it has to be tracked somehow, so, um, that's where that's at and. So it, they didn't spend it, they moved it over into a CD, basically, like, yeah, so.
You explain that better than I do.
Well, I think, hopefully, so it's understood, you know. Everything else, I thought, you know, and some of those. Whether like the water and wastewater, um, we didn't end up. Using the funds for some of the projects, stuff that was.
Totally, this more work that we're doing, um.
This is twenty-four budget, so twenty-five is a separate budget, that's what you guys signed up on, so I. I'd have to look at that and, and like I said, some of it, I, I don't ever. Included in a project, but I kind of put a little extra in there just for an emergency type situation, if we might. Hopefully, we just don't get too many emergency situations and then we overspend. But hopefully, that gives you kind of a good idea where we ended up in twenty-four. Anybody have any questions on it?
Well, we certainly appreciate the extra work that you put in. Dealing with the struggle that you were trying to do when you changed that software, and I know there's other communities that. Also had that same issue, but you survived it and, and got to this point, so. And it took a lot of extra time in your part to do that, so, thank you.
It's part of the process, I guess.
Well, it was hard, it was tough, but you accomplished it, okay? Any other further comments on that then? Okay, so then that brings us to the finance officer report.
We'll try to give you the good news first and now on to the not-so-good news to let you know. Since I finalized. The twenty-four. Account in the old software, and I will be moving on with the new software to the accounts receivable, accounts payable, funds, and payable. So I will be struggling again. And so you may not be getting, until I can get that all transferred, you know, into the new software. You might not be getting bank reconciliation. I can give you. The checking account and money market balances, but I can't split it out to let you know how much of it is general fund, how much is wastewater, water, like. Yes, but. Yeah. So I will be moving forward with that, just to let you know, I'm ready to go forward. And then preparing the annual report, which will be needed in order to. Prepare the information for the auditors. They have sent me on their requests that they always do every year, they're ready to. And have given me timelines to, I went out there and looked at it today. They're being pretty generous to me. It'll be about the middle of March that they're asking for some of those things and then the end of March, and they give me time, so. Working on that. And then, um, just to let you know, we do have equalization meetings coming up. I put a publication in the paper. This week, so it'll show up in next week's, uh, news, because. The state statute, we have to have that first equalization meeting on the third Monday of March, it is the seventeenth. And that's our city council meeting. Um, that got moved due to me attending some of the district meetings that are scheduled for that week. Of course, I don't know what kind of. Paperwork or what people are gonna be bringing in until the thirteenth of March. That's the deadline for people to submit their. Appeals if they have any. But I have already put it in the calendar. And we'll see how it works out. I was thinking that, you know, if we don't have too many, maybe we can try to start at three o'clock. In the afternoon, we can move it back if we don't get that many and do that process first and then move into the city council meetings. Plan is.
Is that an appeal to?
What's it look like? Does it look like it'd be a good time for me to have an appointment or something?
I don't believe so, because, I don't know, it might be a struggle for, like, people. Zach, if you can't get off work, but, and maybe if we don't have too many, we can start at four, can you get off at four?
Yeah, the opportunity.
What's that look like for you?
Better than three.
You know, if you're substituting.
Well, as long as I know ahead of time, I can tell them, yeah.
I mean, I'll try to keep you updated as much as I can, but like I said, I don't. The deadline to get the paperwork submitted to me is not until the thirteenth, that Thursday, of course. That's state statute as well, so.
So the seventeenth, then, or?
Yeah, so I would know by that Friday for sure and, um, to. Let you know times and I'll try to be as. Aware of everybody else's schedule as I can and still get that done. I don't know, it might be. Check and see. Planned, we could just maybe plan to move the city council meeting back and not have it at six thirty that night. Plan for seven or something to try to.
Okay.
Help out with. These are just ideas I have.
Okay.
We just are stuck with starting that night, so.
And, and trying to keep it to be a one-night event, not going to two or three days, right?
Well, um.
Kind of depends.
Yeah.
How many requests are?
I, I'm scheduled to go to the, a district meeting the next day. Um, and so if we had to. Run it into the morning or something like that, I guess, to finish them off.
Okay, so ideally get it done that one day, okay?
I don't know if people have had a chance to kind of look at their assessments and.
Mine hasn't gone out, but my choice, when I checked it out, it was like. Four percent, I think.
You know. I mean, usually, I start getting calls, like, first part of March and stuff saying, you know, when does this, when can I get that paperwork? And all that kind of thing, of course.
Okay.
So that's basically all that I have.
Right. So, Eric, Public Works, I know you've been working a lot with Ted, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for getting my done and. Trying to stay warm, yeah. And we did, uh, I don't know, I, both of you guys, we did fix the curb stopover. At the Best Western trailer over there, I forgot about that, but. And then we did put up the. Posts for the industrial park sign, so that should be going up soon.
I think tomorrow there.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, very good. Uh, for mayor report tonight, the, uh, I recently met with Lieutenant Kendrick. Uh, Sheriff Department for a conversation, and he has indicated that. Their idea of getting new deputies in place and using our apartment that Public Works fixed up for us. Uh, isn't working so well for them, and so they told us not to hold it for many longer. And so my question to you folks are, with the, we're getting calls at the office for. Uh, people looking for places to, to rent in Wal. Should we consider bringing it up? For. Like an employee that's trying to come to town to work for somebody, what would be your feelings?
I think we put, we put some money into it, so I think it'd be.
Can you tell us like what all you did, because maybe they don't know?
Oh, yeah, we re-sheet rocked the whole thing and, uh, put the flooring in and we did. All of this, so I think, yeah, most of you know what we did on that, but now, uh. We were gonna check on the water and we found the pipes had frozen one spot, so. Behind the shower, so we have that open about an hour, we just have to, to re-bone that. Get it fixed.
So with that being said, we put maybe four thousand dollars into it to get it to where it's at. Should we try to recoup some of those expenses and, and with that then, if we would rent it, what's a reasonable amount?
Cause that's with utilities, right, because. Yeah, everything but, everything but, uh. Internet or.
Right, yeah.
Because the heat and water is all the time, the rest of the building.
My bedrooms and I, that's a loft.
So it's definitely a single.
Yeah.
Person, probably.
Yeah, well. Couple of you get along really good.
Single. Are you a school teacher or something that's coming?
Uh, that's to be, that would be, if we can't get a deputy or. You know, B M T or somebody in there, I would think, you know, a school teacher would be ideal, yeah. You know, just. You know, they're gonna be there. Do you? Do you remember what, or he was paying? Those are there? What's that?
Yeah, so I was thinking it was, yeah, wasn't much.
No.
I mean, the minimum for water is a hundred and twenty-eight. So, I mean. Feel like you need to go start that and go off. Because that should be the, or, you know, be. I don't know how far it is to keep the propane or what.
Use propane. But is that included in the rent?
You don't have to be, because it can be separated.
Everything except internet. It's fifty-seven hundred? I, I, with everything, since everything is included, I was thinking seven hundred.
Yeah.
Seven hundred, yeah.
And I mean, really, that's pretty cheap.
Yeah, because with everything included, the trash and power and sewer and all that, you, all they have to pay for is area.
Yeah, so we say you have three hundred in utilities, but.
Yeah, electricity, whatever.
Yeah, four hundred bucks is.
Okay, so would I have a motion to, um. Go ahead and put it on the market and, uh, let the rent be seven hundred and ask our. Attorney to write up an agreement.
So will.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments?
No animals.
No animals. No pets.
The last people that lived in there. And fox, two cats, a dog, a snake. And we had to just.
And they were all, they weren't all housebroken.
Is that what Pink is, is that what?
Yeah, okay, so we have a motion on the floor. To, uh, rent the apartment and you put seven hundred in there, right? It was seven hundred dollars.
No pet.
And no pets. And Stan, did you hear this co- these conversation?
Yes.
Okay, any thoughts?
No, I'm good with that.
Okay.
You probably won't be a school teacher this time of the year.
Are you saying that we need, we have to? But that's an idea, but we did have a person called just very recently, right?
I did reach back. And they.
Oh, it was a they.
No, there was a she.
The individual.
The jot that they had applied for, that she had applied for, um.
Didn't come through, okay. But at least people are known to call here now, and we do have rent, uh. Spaces on both chamber and economic development, right, where people can advertise if they have rent or housing.
Um, no, I don't have rentals, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you. Rashawn is doing rentals, okay, so we put the word out there. Okay, with that being said, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. All right. Are there any other items for discussion? No action will be taken. Hearing none, next city council meeting will be Thursday, March sixth at six thirty P M. What?
Our normal date.
Your normal dates, on Thursday at six thirty. Okay, we do have a need for executive session.
I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to S D.
I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two parentheses. One and three.
Second.
All the in favor, say aye? Oppose, motion carries. Okay, we'll take a slight break here, so the Ted, and gather equipment. Thank you so much for coming down, yes. Let's see, so. Okay, we'll call the city council out of executive session, and, uh, item number twenty-three is, uh, to take action. So would I have a motion?
I make a motion to offer Katie Bruce the finance officer's position at twenty-nine dollars an hour. And if she accepts the change, would be effective upon chamber director position being filled.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve, um, advertising for the, uh. Chamber position.
Okay, so, second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion to approve advertisement, uh, to hire a public works employee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. They advertised Public Works' position. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, and.
I make the motion for a resolution, I've been ten, three years on the bone, please.
Okay, it's been moved.
With Scott as well, but.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mike is seconded. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, is there any other, uh. Thing that needs to come before the council this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I call the meeting adjourned.